I'd like to welcome everybody to the Burke County Board of Commissioners special call meeting for Wednesday, April 12th, 2023. Madam Clerk, we've got Commissioner Smith, Commissioner Burns, Commissioner Britton, Commissioner Carswell, all in attendance. We also have our county finance officer, our county attorney, and our county manager. Madam Clerk, I would remind everyone to please silence our mobile devices. And if you do speak at the lectern today, I would remind you to activate the microphones so those on YouTube that are live streaming, so that you can be heard. Gentlemen, first item of business is the approval of the agenda that was previously submitted. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So move.
Thank you, Commissioner Britton. All those in favor signify with an uplifted hand. Madam Clerk, motion carried, five to zero. Brings us to item number three, item for decision, approval of the capital improvement plan. This will be presented by our county manager, Mr. Brian Epley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I am excited to be here this morning. I think it's an exciting day for Burke County to talk about what our capital investment over the next five years could look like. I've had the opportunity to spend a little bit of time with each of you over the last few weeks, and included in your packet is a much more detailed plan of the execution strategy of what we're going to be covering at a very high level today. But this is the next phase of the budget development process that started initially back on March 2nd, March 3rd, when this board conducted a two-day working session, priority setting of which you developed and articulated your vision in both strategic operational plan and a prioritized capital plan. And so you gave us some direction following that working session, and today is that next, again, periodic check-in as we work towards a formalized budget presentation in May. So following today, just as a brief update before I jump into the capital discussion, I want to brag on our operational departments. We have, to this point, since your work session concluded, I've been able to meet with all of our internal departments as well as external stakeholders, and we are well on track to present a balanced, responsible, priority-based budget in the next few weeks. I'm excited, as we talked about there, that we're balancing, starting with a zero-based concept where we're building the budget from scratch versus incrementally basing using last year's numbers and adjusting those. And I think that gives us a higher level of responsiveness and measurement as we're also trying to manage through this revaluation period. Today, as we embark on this conversation around capital, it also includes an analysis of some very unique one-time spending opportunities. Obviously, when we talk about capital, we're typically talking about one-time expenditures, building something, constructing something, an asset that's going to have a long-term life. For building infrastructure, you're talking 30, 40 years. And part of that conversation has to be, I think, a strategic use of one-time dollars. If you can find one-time opportunities through grants primarily, or one-time surplus opportunities through budget performance, and apply that to your capital needs, that provides the sustainability model that you need, I think, to advance the capital side of the board's vision. As you're all aware, to start that conversation, I think the most material component of what I would call one-time opportunity is through our ARPA funds. And so before I talk about capital, I want to make a recommendation and start the conversation on how, what I believe is highest and best use of the ARPA dollars that we've been awarded here in Burke County. What I would say before I jump in is, we all recognize that this is national fiscal policy. This isn't something that was decided on or controlled at a local level, and there are both proponents and lack folks who totally lack the support of this essentially $1.9 trillion spend plan that was rolled out by the federal government about two and a half years ago. Clearly, that's had impacts on macroeconomics, on our global economics, that essentially drove demand to really unprecedented, across goods and services of all markets, to unprecedentedly high levels, and really the supply struggled, and I think that's the leading cause to some of the inflationary metrics that we've seen. But the reality is, of that, the county received about $17.5 million of one-time grant funding that we have the responsibility of identifying highest and best use. How can we use this one-time funding source in a leveraged way to advance the strategic plan of the Burke County Board of Commissioners? And that's why I think it's a good place to start. I tell you that the $17.5 million approximately is a highly regulated funding source embedded in the Code of Federal Regulations, which is essentially the IRS code, which is the Treasury at the federal level. There are a multitude, it's about a 250-page final guidance, so these dollars are, the compliance and the allowable cost metrics are highly sophisticated and robust. But as you read through them, I believe that there's about five areas that we could strategically capture these federal dollars and embed them into our operational budget for allowable costs, and that one-time use to cover those basic operational costs will, in essence, free up some local dollars that are already allocated to cover that, so we can use those, again, in a one-time way to advance this capital plan. And that's generally the concept that I want to talk about tonight. So you can see here at the bottom of the five areas of the code, all from Chapter 35 that I wanted to highlight, and if we'll go to the next tab there for the summary tab. What you'll see is, again, we started with roughly $17.5 million in this funding source over the last roughly 18 to 24 months. The county's used about $1.3 million on other strategic needs, so we have roughly $16.2 million left to allocate. And what you'll see is a proposal that allocates between now and July 1st about $13.9 million to existing organizational operational costs, and then sometime post-July to December, another $2.27 million. Yes, sir?
Can you make that a little bit larger?
Okay.
Are we good now?
All right. So if you'll just briefly click on the first blue tab, which is identifying personnel, one of the allowable cost centers in the Treasury allows us to identify staff who have a direct role in the mitigation of COVID-19, as you recall. The primary reason for the spending bill of $1.9 trillion was the COVID-19 economic stimulus and mitigation thereof. And so we're allowed to go through and identify folks in varying departments, here we've used five, and allocate a portion of their annual salary to this grant funding source. And again, if we're able to pay their annualized salary or a portion thereof with the grant dollars, that in essence gives us flexibility in an unrestricted way of the local dollars that had been previously programmed to do that. So if you scroll down through the bottom, you can see we've taken all of our employees from those functions and allocated a specific amount of their time to the grant drawdown, which, when you get to the bottom, you'll see frees up approximately about $4 million of local funding. The same kind of concept on the second blue tab there with some EMS equipment, again, an allowable cost, you could theoretically use this, these grant dollars to pay for some of this lifesaving equipment, and you can see that breaks down to about $650,000 in year one, about $422,000 in year two. To conclude, I would, we'll go back to the budget detail tab, and so what we just looked at is a way that allows us to draw down $4 million for people, and then another roughly $2.2 for some public safety equipment. And the way that that would reconcile back is essentially the first $10 million, remember we have $16.2 roughly remaining, the first $10 million the Treasury allows you to account for in a revenue replacement methodology. So we're able to replace potentially lost revenue because of the regulatory shutdowns, the businesses being forced, the stay-at-home orders, all of those things. And now, you know, just the fact that we're doing it a little bit behind the curve, meaning some of those things are restricted, obviously the president restrict, removed the national state of emergency earlier this week, but that allowance is still there. So the first, the first action would be about a $9.3 million revenue replacement in 2023. Bolted onto that would be $652,000 in capital cost coverage for EMS equipment and another $4 million in personnel. So that gets you to the roughly $13.5 million in FY '23 between now and July, and then sometime post-July, this would account for another $422,000 EMS equipment and about $1.8 million, $1.84 million in people, and that adds up to the $16.2 million that we would cover these costs with ARPA money, which, again, allows us to have flexibility with our local dollars in a one-time way to apply towards the capital improvement plan that we want to talk about briefly. So that's a lot of information in a very short period of time, but I hope the concept was clear, and certainly I'm happy to answer questions before we move into the next phase.
Gentlemen, we've been privy to this information beforehand, and you may have some questions since that meeting. If so, anything up to this point? Think we're good?
All right, so I'm going to transition over to the PowerPoint just briefly, and again, what I would say is this is kind of the second phase of the budget development process. What you're going, what we're going to talk about today, the plan that you have in front of you, is not formal approval. If we, if the Board of Commissioners endorses and supports the plan, which I'm hopeful certainly that you are willing to do, it is not the official and formal approval of these projects on an individual basis. This is just part of a, as we talk about priority-based execution strategies, this is endorsing a strategy that works towards executing the projects that you prioritize at your work session. So what that means is, here's how we can get them done, here's how we would pay for that, and this project will be fluid and perpetual as we move through time. At this point, all the projects that are in there are based on speculated need, so each, you know, this is the board giving staff direction and approval to begin developing the individual projects that you see there, and, you know, we would start each of them with a planning process of space needs, then we would go through a more refined cost estimate. But at the conclusion of that, when we're presenting the actual project budget and ordinances to you, that would be the time to officially and formally approve. Today is just, again, endorsement of the strategy and the plan, saying, here were the priorities you gave us, and we're linking that to a funding source and a timetable. So I hope that that gives us some type of reference as we start to move through it. You've seen this slide several times as we've moved, starting back in early March through the budget process, and I think it's just a really important concept to adopt and to really, to fundamentally stand behind, that we can do, I say it most simply, we can do anything, we just can't do everything at one time. So we have to, we have to work through a priority setting and refinement process that starts with what are your most important goals, and then consistently refine that down till we get to a level of output and execution, and what is our guiding compass through that is the Board of Commissioners' strategic plan. And so on March 2nd, as we had our capital priority setting work session, the board gave us really three areas of direction. Number one, you wanted to look at some capital financing policies, and so we've done that. We looked at, if you'll call back on March 2nd, we looked at our current debt portfolio. Burke County has little, very little debt. We reviewed both refinements and opinions from S&amp;P and Moody's, both of those are international level bond rating agencies for corporate entities. We looked at what our current ratios are, even though we don't formally have adopted policies on the level of spend, and the board, after reviewing kind of where we stacked up, which was at a very advantageous place compared to both national and North Carolina counties. So when we look at our amount of outstanding debt, the amount of debt service we have to pay every year, what our ratios look like, these key ratios that these institutionalized folks look at, we compared at the top of the class, and, but, you know, that was, that was where we are. We didn't have adopted policies that keep us there. And so the board asked us to look at that. You also asked us to prioritize and identify those capital needs, and then to develop that into a plan that not only gives the project, but again, links it to a funding source and a timetable, and that's what we think we've been able to accomplish. That's what I'll talk about briefly today, is this multi-year approach based on this facility plan and your strategic work session, and then what the funding sources could be tied to. So, you know, we've talked about this a lot, again, you have the plan in front of you, but this is, again, attempting to project revenues over a five-year period and make sure that we're maintaining our spend plan inside of the parameters that you all have set out, and it also anticipates what are the impact of out of operating that capital. Oftentimes, I think it's important to recognize that infrastructure, the operational cost over time far exceeds the upfront capital cost, and so you have to be planning for that, that component of it as well. And I share that just to say, we've tried to put that forethought into each of the projects that are recommended in this plan. I also think that it's important to say, as I mentioned, each of these will come back to you on an individual basis over time, because for every project to be successful, I think that it requires three fundamental components, especially when you're talking about building infrastructure. One, we have to have a very solid plan for space allocation. How do we back into the size? How do we back into the allocation? Do we have uniformity in that? What does the structural square footage look like? What does the location look like? What does the out-year maintenance look like? And then lastly, how we're going to pay for it? What's the funding source? Really, each of those, again, will come back to you over the next few months and weeks if this plan is endorsed, to approve those. So that's what's in the plan. It's really this perpetual, I think, as we've said, at this point, some will be, some of our estimates will be over, some will be under, and numbers will be fluid inside of the plan, but the total, the totality will remain, remain the same, and we'll, we'll try to keep the board updated as we move through. To me, some, the three most important factors to consider is, number one, affordability, you know, what can we reasonably afford? How will we pay for it? Once we make those commitments, we have to maintain discipline. We, you know, capital improvement planning, once you start, it's very difficult to pull that back, and we have to be thinking 10, 15, 20 years down the road. Some of the projects that you'll see in your plan, Commissioner Carswell and I talked about it yesterday, we're not in a position at this point to recommend a strategy for a new courthouse, but at some point, Burke County will need to work on that. And so at this moment, if we're maintaining this concept of it being future-focused, the question is, how do we extend the life and the usability of our current infrastructure, recognizing that now's not the time for replacement? But at some point, there will be, and the time to talk about that is now, versus in 10 years, 15 years, when it's critically needed. So trying to, you know, make that conversation more normalized and condition ourselves to the expectation that that is coming at some point is, I think, part of this plan. It's also important to think about where we've been and where we are, and then where we're going, whether that's growth, economic performance, revenue, you know, staff size, all of those things are critical because they have such an impetus on making sure that the plan can be executed. So again, I think that we've talked a lot about, both on the operational and capital side, the work that this board has done over the last five to seven years, and finding that intersection between preparedness and opportunity. The preparation's been done, we have exceptionally low debt requirements at the moment, and we have budget flexibility, and now that opportunity, I believe, when paired with these one-time dollars in grants, I would point out that not only does the plan consider leveraging the ARPA money, but it also includes SCIF grants received from the General Assembly last year, as well as clean water grants. So there's a multitude, and we'll talk about that just briefly, a multitude of outside non-local dollars that are funding the vast majority of this capital improvement plan. I'd also remind you that these priorities that you set in beginning of March were based on a professional assessment that was done by Mosley Architects in 2020. So the county contracted with this architectural team to come in and evaluate every building in the county's building stock. Each of those were rated between one and five, with one being poor, end of life, and they ranked each building on these six systems, from structural to security systems, and that, all of that information was presented to the board in March, and that's a leading driver for how you based your, your level of need and prioritization. Here's kind of a takeaway from that, as you can see, a significant portion of our buildings are, we're below that kind of two and a half threshold of approaching end of life, and that was, again, a major component. As a reminder, we talked a little bit about our debt portfolio. You can see that hard on the left-hand side, this is tax-supported debt service, so the amount of dollars that are spent each year divided between principal and interest that are required to pay debt. Last year is about 7.7% of our general fund. Total debt outstanding at par is about $44 million, and you can see, as I mentioned, this hard kind of fall-off after 2026 in debt service. The debt's broken down between about $16.8 million that belongs to the county, and about $27.5 million belongs to the school system. And the reason that I differentiate between these is that all of that school debt is paid for, again, with outside funding sources, through North Carolina lottery proceeds and restricted specialized sales tax that has to be spent on the school capital. So none of that's coming from property tax base. A couple of those key ratios that I mentioned, one is this concept of a 10-year payout. So 10-year payouts, we've discussed many times now, is really an analytical analysis of what, what percentage of our total par outstanding will we pay off over the next 10 years? And the reason that that's important is because typically, when you're issuing debt, it's for a 20-plus year term. So if you're paying off a significant portion of that principal in 10 years, that gives you a good perspective of the financial health and the solvency of the county's financial position as it relates to debt. And you can see currently, we're at 74.9%, and by 2029, we're at 100%. So again, just a good optic, a good analytic, and these ratios are things that both the local government commission, banks, bond rating agencies look at and are able to compare us to not only North Carolina counties, but national counties, and that's what we've done here. So I mentioned that currently our 10-year payout ratio is 74.8%, and even though we don't have an official policy yet historically, what we would typically see is something around 50%. So we're significantly above that, and when you look at what S&amp;P and Moody's and those folks say, they say, really, anything over 65% is as strong as you can be. There is no higher score. That's as high as you can possibly do. So another kind of hierarchy and comprehensive analytic that we can use to compare ourselves to others is this debt-to-assess tax value. So your assessed value is, in a local government, agglomeration methodology, concept of your ability to generate revenue, and obviously, banks and bond rating companies care about your ability to generate revenue when they're signing off on any type of debt borrowing. So currently, we're at 6 tenths of a percent when you take our total par outstanding compared to our roughly $7.5 billion tax base. Anything really that's, that's lower than 3%, 2% to 3%, is as good as you can do, and currently, we're at 6 tenths of 1%. And I would point out that during this revaluation period, our tax base has gone from $7.5 billion to $10.6 billion, so that 0.6 is actually going to be more like 0.4. So again, incredibly, incredibly strong when you look at our level of debt outstanding. Here, this chart here compares us to other national counties, and this compares us to other North Carolina counties, and again, as you can see, just demonstrates the, the level of strength that we're at. And this last analytic that can be considered as a policy that would really set parameters on, you know, for Burke County moving forward, the policy that the board would, these policies that the board would consider, the most simple way that I would explain it to folks is, think about it as the, you know, here's the lines that you must operate inside of. You can't, you can't, you know, spend or issue debt that would get outside of these ranges, and it gives, it gives staffs the opportunity to evaluate execution strategies, and as long as we maintain those boundaries, we know that we're meeting the policy guidance set by the Board of Commissioners. This last one is, what percentage of our total general fund budget, which is our primary operating fund, are we spending on debt? And currently, we're at 7.7%, and you can see here, when S&amp;P gives the thresholds from their, their assessments, anything lower than eight is as good as you can do. So literally, for every metric that is used in the industry, Burke County is currently as strong as one can perform. I grabbed a quick excerpt from Moody's, this was their last issuer comment, and essentially what they're saying is, you have strong financial performance, good management practices and policies, they would encourage more, you know, formalizing our debt policies, even though we're well under those areas, they would still, you know, endorse us trying to formalize those just for, you know, the optic of having that done. Really, the only things holding our credit rating back, which I think is in the top 15 of all 100 counties in North Carolina, is some of the socio-economic, macroeconomic areas that we simply, over time, have to work on and build that we don't have direct control of. So I think that's incredibly encouraging to hear an objective, professional opinion who does this for a living for all the counties in our state, all the counties in our country. So what we would ask the board to consider is these, is these three debt policies, 10-year payout, debt balance as a percentage of assessed tax value, and then debt service expenditures as a percentage of total annualized expenditures, and included in that would be a minimum fund balance policy as well. And, Mr. Chairman, we can stop here if the board would like to consider action here, or I can move through just the last couple of slides, and you can consider one action that would formalize these policies, as well as a doc and endorse the plan, however the board would like to do that.
Gentlemen, you want to take them one by one, or you want to do them as a whole? Do them as a whole? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, a question right here before we leave that screen.
Yes, sir.
Brian, if we take action, for instance, on number one, with the 25% number, does that in any way hamstring a board in the future if, if some action needed to be taken that might come close to that number, or below that number, what, what would need to happen?
So two things I would say. A future board can always change the policy. An action of a future board could remove the policy, it could expand the policy, or it could make the policy more restrictive. But I would tell you, in my experience, and I think if we had, you know, lending institutions, local government commission here, they would say that these are industry best practice policy recommendations, and that they are good checks and balances to ensure that the county is maintaining financial responsibility while still accomplishing the needs, the capital needs that it has. So it could, if, for example, there was a, you know, a multi-hundred-million-dollar project that the county wanted to fund that would shoot, that, you know, it would be outside the parameters of the policies that we're recommending, but that's for a reason, that's to indicate that there's high risk, and likely that's not needed. None of these policies in any way hamstring this, you know, the current portfolio of projects that you all have prioritized. Even with, you know, the execution of those, you're still way below the parameters that are being recommended. Does that answer that question?
So Brian, with the ratios that you're proposing, just to reiterate, they're going to, they're going to meet or exceed industry standards, and we're still going to be hitting all the AA-rated S&amp;P, Moody's, all those parameters that they look for. So everything that you're proposing, just want to reiterate, we're going to be at the highest strength when we come to debt capacity.
This will enhance our bond rating. This will enhance our bond rating because it's saying to the agencies that we've taken formal action to ensure that we don't overextend, so that we are calculated in our approach, that we're able to run those analytics before we even consider a project, and that we most simply know what we're doing. And so, you know, they certainly are industry best practice. They meet or exceed, as you said, what would be in the market, but I expect it to enhance how they view us financially.
I think we ought to commend ourselves for being physically responsible to get to where we're at today. We chose not to waste that ARPA money. I mean, that ARPA money could have been gone, but now we have that ARPA money here to supplant local dollars. We don't have to worry about it anymore if we have to do on a borrowing, if we go limited obligation bonds or whatever we decide to go to. We don't have to do it anymore because we made prudent decisions is to keep that ARPA money here. We have been sliding about the seat of our pants as far as Moody's ratings and everything. We shouldn't have had this policy a long, long time ago. The numbers don't lie. We have done extremely well and positioned ourselves so that we can do what we're trying to do for the future of this county by doing it today. We have a plan. We didn't have a plan before. Now there is a plan. So I commend you and your staff seeing what the vision is, what we wanted to do, and that we did make the right decisions to have the money here to be able to do what we want to do, and then we don't have to extend ourselves. It's just, it's good fiscal policy.
Well said, Commissioner. Absolutely.
Gentlemen, any other questions, comments at this point? No, go ahead and proceed.
So again, you've all been well ahead of time, given the more detailed formal plan that identifies each specific project. And I know that you've all had a chance to review that, but I'll hit some of the highlights. The plan identifies revenue sources in this order. Number one, we'll always seek grant funds first and foremost. It also includes the recommendation for the initial creation of a formal capital reserve fund, which would dedicate about 2.5 cents to out-year capital, followed by pay-as-you-go, which is the ability to leverage available unrestricted liquidity to advance these capital needs. And then lastly, debt proceeds. And I would point out that in the event that debt was needed and required to be issued, that would be allocated from the funding to the capital reserve fund. So that, again, it gives you those parameters that you're looking for so that you can forecast multiple periods forward without overextending. Some of the components of the plan include major rolling stock. So this is primarily in our emergency services function. We have about 236 vehicles in our fleet. We're working on a formalized fleet replacement plan with a ledger. We're annually, we've just started annually assessing each of our vehicles so that we can tell the utilization in a 12-month calendar period as well as changing condition and to make sure that we're, you know, again, managing that in a prospective way and that we have control. The other component of major capital that I point out is in the EMS department transitioning away from a single-year acquisition to a five-year lease option that allows us to replace the majority of the fleet with new apparatus, really at a lower cost than trying to buy one. And the reality is, at the conclusion of five years, when an ambulance has 250,000 miles on it, it has no residual salvage value, so ownership is essentially meaningless. And this concept of a five-year replacement lease ensures that we have adequate, robust rolling stock and apparatus for emergency services. So that's included in the plan. We also touched briefly on a few other areas. As you all know, you've already started this field's HVAC replacement. That'll be continued and concluded. We've centralized and have a scale replacement schedule for computer and PCs. It's about $274,000. And then lastly, this concept of public safety radio. We have 212 public safety radios between our five public safety functions. All of those are, or the vast majority of those, roughly about 160, 165 of them have not been replaced. And the reason that that's critical, I'm sure the board knows, in about two years, those radios will be end-of-life and motorola. So literally, it'll be to the point where we're buying carts on eBay to keep it going. So we wanted to include a full replacement schedule, this tick over $1 million over a five-year period in this capital reserve. Here's some of the other projects. I'll brag on our operating departments now at this point. As part of the budget packet, we sent out a five-year capital outlook request for anything that would be in excess of $50,000 so that we can have consistency and predictability in our out-year capital funding. All of this would come through that 2.5 cent capital reserve fund, and it prevents the volatility that you may see from year to year that causes surprises, and again, puts pressure on the property tax rate. And this gives us the ability to forecast out so that we avoid that level of uncertainty. Lastly, I'd say that we were able to break your priorities into short-term, midterm, and long-term areas. Short-term would be something that we believe we can accomplish in the next 12 months. Midterm would be something in that 13 to 48-month timeframe. And long-term projects are things that we know are important and that we should begin socializing and talking about and understanding and those type of things. But at this point, there is no level of execution that's planned. We have, we don't have a timeframe. We don't have, you know, a funding source. But the concept is long-term would move to midterm, midterm would move to short-term over time, as this perpetual plan, again, maintains that level of fluidity so that we're able to keep our building infrastructure, our major capital, in a satisfactory place. I'll leave you with this slide. As you recall, as we were working through our ARPA spend plan, we had a residual balance of about $16.2 million. The plan that you all have to consider recommends the endorsement of about $63.3 million in total capital, and the vast majority of that, $38 million of that being paid for by outside sources. Of the projects that I would consider major, really only the HRC building is something that doesn't have a dedicated funding source at this point. If you notice, the pay-as-you-go aligns with the freed-up local dollars because we were able to identify ongoing operational costs that align with compliance of ARPA. Again, that freed up those local dollars one time that we can plug into this plan. That's why those numbers reconcile. Indian Hills, we got about $1.1 million and another million dollars in 2021, '22 SCIF grants from the General Assembly, and we have grant applications in for EMS Base One and Regional Rehab Facility. And then the strategy would be after we go through a space, formalized space planning concept, and after we go through a more articulated conceptual design, we'll see what the cost would be for a new Health and Human Services building. And at that point, the board will have the opportunity to consider. But the recommendation at this point would be to likely fund that through limited obligation bonds or installment financing from an institution. Again, at this point, all of this is concept and strategy, but I do believe that the priorities outlined by this board on March 2nd are all highly accomplishable in a physically prudent, responsible way in a moderate amount of time. That's a lot of information in a short period of time. I'm certainly happy to answer any questions Mr. Chairman you or the board may have.
Gentlemen.
I know Brian met with all of us individually before this, so we've been privy to this information, so hopefully you've had a chance to digest it and come up with any questions you may have. I will say it's unbelievable job. I'm just going to throw that out there. It's quite impressive. You've addressed all the needs that we've asked you to address in a proven, responsible way that doesn't lean much on the taxpayer, actually. And so, and I'm just going to reiterate what Commissioner Carswell said. This is why we were very prudent in waiting on spending on the ARPA funds, gentlemen, because now we've been able to utilize those in the most cost-effective way moving forward. Because I know some of our friends got ahead of themselves in other counties and started spending money, and by being patient, we're able to multiply the effect of those funds. So, gentlemen, questions, comments?
I want to say I think you did a great job too, you and your staff both, but I think we need to put some leg shackles on you to make sure you don't leave in the next five years because I think you're doing a good job.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to look at ways that we might expedite the Health and Human Services. Maybe pull that a little bit more front burner. I mean, we know construction costs are only going to go up in years to come, and...
Yeah, so what, if this plan is supported, the way I would see that going is first, hiring a space planning consultant to help us refine, again, when you're looking at construction costs, every square foot of additional space, and you need to plan for the future, without question. You need to be modernized and efficient in your allocation and provide uniformity. But you're probably talking, you know, a few months of dedicated space analysis, followed by, you know, an RFP for engineering design. You know, that's going to take, you know, another two months. So within three months, you know, there could be, you know, forward momentum in the plan design, and that's obviously going to take eight, 10 months for a building, you know, this size. And so, you know, I think it's reasonable to say, moving as quickly as we can, we're back in front of this board in 12 months with a strategy of this is what the building could look like, this is where it could be located, this is how much it would cost, and this is the recommended, 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 great day, funding source to continue to move that forward. So, you know, even though it's in that midterm concept, it's in the midterm concept because that's how long it'll take to execute versus there being any delay. If the plan is supported and endorsed, again, they'll all come back to you individually for approval, but we're going to begin advancing them all as quickly as we can.
Well, just looking at the information you provided, it's concise, it's clear, it's very much appreciated to you guys for, you know, holding back on the ARPA expenditures so we could get into this place today. I really appreciate that as a new guy coming in. Well done to you and the staff. I mean, this, it can't be much clearer than this. I would like to one day start to have some conversation about Article 46 referendum. I think that would help move us even further down the road towards our long-term goals. We'll get there. Well done.
For the benefit of these people, would you explain Article 46?
Yeah, basically, it's a quarter of a penny sales tax that would be excised just for capital. We could use it. It would help us move towards those goals, but what it does better than anything else is it shares that. It takes the burden off of the property tax to a certain extent and spreads that out over sales tax. So that quarter cent sales tax would be paid by everybody who drove through Burke County, everybody who stayed in Burke County. And the reality is, if you drive out of Burke County and spend any money right now, you're paying it anyway. I mean, it's, to me, it's a very fair and equitable way to gather some capital improvement dollars. Would you add anything to that?
No, I would, I think everything you said is right. Rutherford, Lincoln, Catawba, pretty much every county, north, south, east and west. So essentially, the statewide sales tax rate, 6.75 cents. So that means if I spend $100 at Lowe's, my total cost is $106.75. This would be an extra quarter per $100 that you spent. So to the individual, it's a minimal effect. When applied at a scale, it would generate about $2.5 million reoccurring. It's consumption-based, to your point. So there's 14,000 or 15,000 people a day that commute into this county to do business, to work, and you're able to spread that taxing burden across people, also people who rent, you know, those type of things. So there's folks that may not be equitably sharing. Most people, I would think, would agree that a consumption-based tax, such as sales tax, is a more fair way to tax than, you know, the adware methodology, which applies to your property. So it's minimally invasive to the consumer, applied at scale. It's very material. And to your point, right now, if you're traveling outside of this county to procure anything, to go shopping, to buy anything, you're paying, you're just advancing those communities' needs versus the home community. So it puts us at a little bit of a disadvantage. There's no doubt about that.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Burns. One quick question for you too, as far as, you know, we've given you a lot, and obviously you and the staff have the ability to do a lot. But that being said, do you feel you have the staff in place to do everything we're talking about at this point?
Yes and no. Yes, we have an incredible team here. I've been more than blessed and pleased to onboard with such a strong team. I do think that not just with the capital, the capitalism isn't the perspective. I think that we have strategically the opportunity to work smarter, not harder, right? So we likely would need some human capital investments, some areas that we don't have right now over time, not just because of the capital plan. I don't want the board to think because of this capital, you know, plan support that that's going to require personnel needs. What I mean is, we want to be more measured, more strategic, more analytical, less reactive, more proactive in everything that we do. And right now, I think this organization, from top to bottom, from a professional staff perspective in places, has been built to manage what's coming up versus manage where we're going. And, you know, that's something that I'm evaluating, and we'll have some recommendations to the board over time. But I have total confidence, if the board gives us this direction, we can execute and do good work and, you know, make you all, make you all proud.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, one more thing if I could. Commissioner Smith, Britton, myself, there's several of us who have spent the last several Fridays going around touring our facilities, meeting some of the folks. This is important work, and I want to say a special thanks to our clerk, Alan Glines Park, and several of you have been on the tours, and I want to thank those who have greeted us with such kindness when we've gotten here as well.
I've got a question for Mr. Burns, or you, or whoever knows the answer. That sales tax, the quarter of one penny, is that the maximum you can do, or is there a limit on that?
So, yeah, for Article 46, that's set in stone. It's that. There are other sales tax articles at the General Assembly level that can be enacted. All of those are done via referendum. This board simply has to give taxpayers and voters the authority to choose. I mean, that's how it's enacted. There are other articles around the state for transit, but they all have a specific use. Article 46 is the only moderately unrestricted, you know, methodology to do that, and it is limited at 1/4 of 1%.
Good question.
Yes, sir.
I think I about forgot what I wanted to say. Are we going to talk about individual things right now? I'm going to support the concept of the plans, but there are some new concepts in there that we have not been familiar with in the past, and one of those is leasing. We have not leased a whole lot of anything in the past. We are now using all the new terms, catch terms out there, end of life. It's just like, I have never been a proponent of the Viper system. Mr. Wilson's back there knows I hate the word Viper and what it, how it even started out. We are end of life, and everything became a crisis. Everything was a crisis. We came in, we had 1,000 radios, and they're all dead. What are we going to do tomorrow? Everything we did became a crisis, and we had to put a Band-Aid on it. So I totally support the fact of leasing on ambulances, you know? At the end of life, I'd rather it belong to somebody else than belong to me at the end of life. Because what am I going to do with it? Put it in the junk pile? That's not what we should be doing. So I commend you again for even taking a look at lease programs. I think that's the way that we probably should go, and look at some of these so-called end-of-life things where we don't come up on Tuesday and have to have it on Wednesday. So thank you again for taking, I think that's physically responsible, and at the end, that will save us a lot of money. I know you've already eyeballed that, and you see what that is going to save us more money. So please make every effort, concentrate your efforts on those programs, and then we can speak further on other things.
Mr. Chairman, since the issue of Viper radios were brought up...
I didn't bring that up.
Well, you said the word Viper. You know, that's one of the pressures that we put on all of our local volunteer fire departments, is they have to have the communication devices to work with us back and forth, and they struggle to do that. And like so many things in our local departments, they buy... And like so many things in our local departments, they buy things with grant money. Well, if you buy 30 air pack bottles with a grant, guess what those air pack bottles are going to do? They're all going to expire at the same time, and that creates those emergencies and those As we move forward with things like Viper radios, I would love to be able to see us get together with our local departments, our volunteers, and collaborate and figure out how we can use economies of scale to maybe get...
That's what I was going to say. Certainly, the magnitude of the relationship with the vendor, Motorola, for example, that the county has, certainly will give some strategic economies of scale to anybody that we can bolt home to. And now, I think, I agree with you 100%. That's a, at the end of the day, they're public stewards, as we are, with high needs, and their radios are critical. They're critical. So that is absolutely, I think, a good conversation to have with those folks. They have the same replacement needs that we do, and to the chairman's question about, you know, building the team, you know, and to Commissioner Carswell's point about not allowing things to jump up on you and be crisis and planning and being future forecasted, that's what this whole conversation is about.
Chairman, other questions, comments?
Once again, fantastic presentation. I think he's done a great job of explanation, simplifying the complicated, is what you've done, because, you know, it can be overwhelming to look at what we're getting ready to embark upon, but you simplified it, explained it extremely well, and kept the cost to a minimum to taxpayers, and we've been very creative. So, once again, I'd like to thank you and the staff, because I know how many hundreds of hours behind the scenes that all of you've chipped in and contributed. And so, without y'all, you know, as a valuable resource, you know, we wouldn't be looking at this picture as a whole. And so, we, I do want to give all of you a big shout-out, because y'all have done amazing work in a short amount of time to have this presentation in front of us in this short period of time. Gentlemen, any other questions or comments? Then I'd ask, what's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the capital improvement plan as presented.
Thank you, Vice Chair Britton. All those in favor signify with an uplifted hand. Madam Clerk, that's a resounding 5-0.
May I just, for clarity, did your motion include the policies that we mentioned with fund balance and the three-debt management policies?
Yes, sir, it did.
Okay.
Absolutely. Great job. Thank you. Well, gentlemen, this time, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman, may I digress and talk about a couple of things before we leave today?
Sure, absolutely.
We have, Ryan's made a great report today for us on what plans will be, and there's some individual things that, like the Eastbrook Convenience Center, I want us to take a long, hard look, Brian, when we look at the Eastbrook Convenience. We fell into a goldmine down there. We own a huge piece of property down there that would be able to, that we would be able to do a lot of work on. So I want us to make sure that we take advantage of every inch of property down in that area down there. I don't know what all we can do. I don't think we've taken enough time to take a good look at that piece of property to even decide. I know Mark's utilizing it as much as he can for whatever he can, but we, that's a big piece of property in there, and I hope we take some time and take a look at that piece of property especially, to see what we want to do with that one. I hope I don't see a pump station up here anymore, on any screen that I ever look at again about a pump station. So I want us to concentrate again our efforts on that. I think we have, we've done everything that we need to do, I think, is pump stations. So I guess the point I'm trying to make is, we've moved forward, and we have a capital plan now. There's a certain, a couple of certain areas that, over the last five years, the three of us have sat here and we've heard it over and over and over and over, and I think it's time that we don't hear it over anymore, that, they want to sell me a car. That we just take a good look. We're at the opportunity now where we can take a look at these things and make these plans exactly, because, again, I say, we positioned ourselves so we would be able to do this, and I want to make, I know we will, but I just want to reiterate that today. I just felt strongly about that for the last couple of days, thinking about, you know, what we actually can do, because we are down with a good board of five, with the two new members on here that understand what we've been trying to do the whole time. I just wanted to say that.
Commissioner Carswell, I want to put you on the spot a little bit, too, since we're talking about things that we've been working on extremely hard, that, you know, it seems like every time we go one way, something else pops up. But where, in your opinion, where do we stand on broadband? Because that is, besides the infrastructure plan, we all know broadband is, is, I mean, so important to this plan and for Burke County moving forward. So, and I know, well, the three of us, obviously, have been intensely following up on that for several years, but especially Commissioner Carswell, meeting at the state and federal level. So what would you, any comments on broadband while we're talking about infrastructure?
Sure. I would suggest that Brian has got his first taste as to what's been happening over the years. We have been, we have been under the thumb and pressure of Charter Spectrum, because that was our number-one supplier of broadband in Burke County, and they've not done us justly. And so, we have placed, we have had local conversations with their government relations guy, and he promised to bring Brian and myself some documentation on some things that we want to try to do. But I'm hopeful when the CAB program comes in. I probably feel better about the CAB program than any grant program that the state has put forward so far. We are still dependent upon the state and these grant programs that are out there. So CAB is the best-looking one, but we will have to put forth money from the county to help into the CAB program. But that will be able to allow us to pick Fields area where it's needed really, really, really bad, and we can put broadband into Fields area. We don't have to go with Watcher or Spectrum tells us we have to go over here in Jeff's area, because I think they can make more money over here. So I feel good about the CAB, and I think as we move forward, Madam President, this initiative is not, it's moving. It's not moving very fast. We've got a meeting again next week on that. But broadband in Burke County has just been a slow process because of the topography, and that's basically all it is, is Charter says it costs them too much money to put broadband in Burke County. I totally 100% disagree with that. I am adamantly opposed to that concept. They're a rich company, and they can do anything they want to do. Back to the same story.
Well, it's the reason they're worth billions of dollars. So, but I appreciate you addressing that, because we've looked at multiple programs. We probably get more phone calls about that than we do anything else. And of course, Mr. Epley, we're going to be cognizant of that fact moving forward in our infrastructure plan. So I didn't want to leave that out when we're all looking at this presentation. I did want to address that. Anything you want to throw in as well?
Yeah, I agree with Commissioner Carswell. We've had several meaningful meetings, and I think that, let's say, he's made his expectations very clear to these providers, but it does require public-private partnership. We are at the mercy of working alongside these vendors. It doesn't have to be Charter Spectrum, although they likely have the highest amount of horsepower. One thing that's really a challenge that we internally are pushing forward and control is what I would call cleaning up the data. So if you look at the state information as far as what is covered, you know, it's misleading because it demonstrates that 67% of Burke County can receive what they qualify as high-speed broadband, which is a 24-band fiber. But that's based on if one person in a census tract has access. So what we're doing at a local level is creating a heat map, if you will, of households, and then overlaying that with what Spectrum and Compass and these other folks say that they can provide, to see where is the highest areas of need. Where's the highest density of household conglomeration that is uncovered? And once the CAB program, once some of these other folks come, I think we'll have a more surgical approach to investment versus, you know, saying, well, that area is good, it's covered, because one house out of 150 may have access. Because that is misleading. If you go to the FCC or Department of Technology's website and look at their coverage areas, you would not think the need is as deep and broad as it really is. So I think that that will help us in providing information to the board for you guys to make more analytical decisions on broadband, because it certainly is, connectivity is critical, and we know that.
And just for clarity, the 2.5% we're talking about, setting aside for expenditures moving forward, having that planned, that bucket could be used for some broadband infrastructure needs?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
So just wanted, yeah, absolutely, yeah. But I just want to make that clear, so that's, it's not just for hard buildings, you know, HRC or whatever it is. It is absolutely for any critical infrastructure need.
That's correct. Perfect.
Gentlemen, any other questions or comments? Gentlemen, then I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we adjourn.
Thank you, Commissioner Burns. All those in favor signify with uplifted hand. That motion carried. Madam Clerk, 5-0. Once again, thanks, everybody, for coming today.